It is now 5:01, November 21, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District and the city's housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included in the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I do not see anyone in the audience that would like to address the Council. Therefore, may we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have nine items listed this evening, however, several of the items are related. Item A, on behalf of the City Council, is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. Any facts and circumstances relating thereto are set forth pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. Items B and C are existing litigation, and they are related to items E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority. That litigation is being discussed pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. Parties and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D is related to item I on behalf of the Airport Authority. That is also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And again, the parties to the litigation and the case numbers set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the six o'clock regular meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session and a regular session convened at 6:00 P.M. It is now six o'clock, November 21, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. The Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority. The Victorville Water District and the city's housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had nine items on closed session this evening. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. The facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C are related, those are on behalf of the City Council, they are related to items E, F, G, and H, all of which are pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case names and case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. And item D, on behalf of the City Council, is related to item I on behalf of the Airport Authority. Also existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And again, the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. We will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Patrick Travers from Holy Innocents Catholic Church. And the pledge of allegiance to be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord, this evening, we lift up our prayers for the city of Victorville and their servants, our mayor and this council. We ask you to bless them with compassion and wisdom. We ask that they realize their responsibilities in their positions of authority and not abuse them. Give nothing but their very best to the office they hold every day. We are grateful for their service to us and their dedication to our city. And as this governing body pursues the business at hand, we ask you to guide them with your direction. Keep this council ever mindful of the dignity of their office and encourage them to reach out to each other with a strong desire for peace and harmony. And in this Thanksgiving season, as you witness the workings of our government in this council, remind us to thank you for our blessings of liberty and freedom that began with the first feast of Thanksgiving in 1621 and has been celebrated as a federal holiday every year since 1863, when during the American Civil War, President Abraham Lincoln proclaimed a national day of Thanksgiving and praise to our beneficent Father who dwells in the heavens. Amen. Pledge allegiance
to the United States of America
and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. So can our city clerk please present the agenda to the council and any revisions to the agenda?
Okay. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearing, communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9 and Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. The following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. And the revision is to item B1, the public hearing is being pulled and will be re-notice for a future meeting.
That's all we have, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We have no appeal hearings, therefore, we move on to public hearings. And as stated, item B1 has been re-notice for a future meeting. So we move on to item B2. Approval of notice of exemption. Appropriate highway safety improvement program grant and award construction contract to Vance Corporation in the amount of $158,649 for the Elavado Roadway Improvement Project from Hook Boulevard to Mojave Drive. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendations that the City Council approve the notice of exemption for the Elavado Roadway Improvement Project. Appropriate a federal highway safety improvement program grant in the amount of $127,300. Waive the minor bidding irregularity. And award a construction contract in the amount of $158,649 to Vance Corporation for the Elavado Roadway Project from Hook Boulevard to Mojave Drive.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing.
We have no cards.
I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. I close the public hearing. Are there any questions, comments from councilmembers?
Yes.
Who wants to speak? I heard something.
Councilmember Gomez would like to speak.
Go ahead.
So in regards to waiving the minor bidding irregularity, can you explain how that would have changed the bidding process and the contingency? Because the other two weren't able to supply contingency, or how that affects it if it does at all?
It doesn't affect it at all. The bidding irregularity that occurred in this particular case had to do with the difference between the bidders subtotalling and totaling a contingency. Only one of the bidders actually did a subtotal of construction and then added the contingency to get a total, total, if that makes sense. The other bidders did not put that contingency. So to create an apples-to-apples comparison, to conclude on the low bid, we did it based solely on the subtotal, which is representative of the actual construction costs. The contingencies wouldn't have factored in any differently because the contingency is applied the same across. So it has no change in the process. Doesn't material affect the process, and effectively still, the low bidder gets the award.
No further questions. Move the item?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, second by Mayor Protem Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent counter. Consent counter items C1 through C11 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion. Second.
Before we go to a formal vote, point of order, I'd like to make commentary pulling to items. I have questions too, on C5 and C11.
Move approval items C1 through C4 and C6 through C10?
What about my motion that I withdraw?
Did she just want to ask questions and then that was it?
I have questions on C5 and C11.
So would you like to pull those two items and then have a vote on the remaining items?
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti's motion came after yours, so that would be voted on first if there's a second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Negretti, and second by Councilmember Kennedy to approve consent items C1 through C4 and C6 through C10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So for item C5, I have a couple of questions. Do we do business in bulk? And we also have mom-and-pop stores down, are we including them in the process? And what process does the city of Victorville go through? Maybe like an informal bidding process? In other words, was the procurement process? And I'm seeing, I am seeing a heavy use of NAPA in the commercial demand section. And I would like to see others besides NAPA being used, maybe quality around. So that's what I've been looking at. So if you guys can answer my questions, that would greatly help with item C5.
You want to take it, George? I know that we use a variety of different vendors for different products.
Right, and so the procurement process may vary depending on the quantity of the product that we need and the total value of that product. I think specifically, if you're talking about NAPA auto parts, then those are usually smaller purchases and can go through a fairly informal process. We do use a variety of vendors, as I've discussed with my procurement manager. And we can get you a report of all those vendors that we do use specifically for those types of services. But, I'm sorry, what was the second part of the question regarding mom-and-pops and?
Yeah, do we include them in the process?
Right, so we would have a list of vendors that are approved to do business with the city and go through that list when searching for products. Now, we'll find out, we'll run a report to find out exactly what the weight is on any particular vendor and get that to you.
Okay, thank you. And for C11. So this one I also submitted. So I'm just going to run through the questions and hopefully you guys catch them all. So you have an email that I sent out. So it looks like this property was listed March of 2016, and it seems to me like a fire sale. I've provided the council with title and comps for this parcel and extra copies to the public's review that's outside on the table. We seem to be lowballing this parcel, and it's compared to four different properties that Caldwell Banker compared it to in his paria. So does the city know who the owners of the surrounding parcels are in that land? How long do we have to dispose of this land? Could we hold off and before selling it, maybe, before selling the property, just hold off? And why are we not waiting for a better offer? I felt that this could be potentially considered a gift to public funds, which is illegal and what is in a hurry to give away some land. So I don't see the land being depreciated in value. It's next to the 15 freeway, the high desert is prime for growth. I recently heard someone in the county-state saying that 80% of the high desert are commuters. People live in the high desert and commute down the hill. And we know land up here is cheaper for people to live in. The comparable properties that the broker compared this parcel are more than what was recommended for the money that's going to be paid out to the particular parcel. The city is supposed to go through different commissions, and it includes Mojave Water Agency, school districts, larger agency like this. I know there's seven members. And I'm not sure if they've already seen what we're going to do with this property, and did it go through them first? Has it gone through the committee after disbandment of the RDA, like it was supposed to? What was their opinion? This parcel is part of what we're trying to pay off. And so to me, if we have more money to give back to the redevelopment, it means that we owe less debt. So maybe I'm suggesting that you give us another 45 days to see if we can get a better bid. We're stewards of this parcel, and the money goes back to the state, which means it goes to the people. We want to be able to make sure that we're good stewards, because after all, this is a part of the same constituency. This commercial property is at its highest from a decade ago, and it's off the freeway, like I've said before. And for the buyer or the broker, we don't want it to be remarketed and get another commission off of this. When a developer has to build or add utilities, it's just part of the thing. You add gutters, sidewalks, lighting, it's just the normal part of business. It's also an unsavvy financial decision that we're making if we decide to sell that parcel at $89,000. It's a steal for the buyer. I understand that under 100 grand was the best deal that we could have gotten as an offer. And I get that the property may not be attractive based on the location, but I also have a different perspective. This parcel is next to the freeway, as I said. And part of doing business, developers have to bring in the utilities, sidewalks, and so forth.
Mayor? Want to take it? I'll jump in there, and then Sophie will back me up with the details that I probably will miss. Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is an item involving the sale of former RDA property. And as you know, in your capacity as the successor agency to the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency, that's the capacity that you're acting on here. You have been directed by the state of California to dispose of all former RDA assets. So effectively, that's the process that we're going through. It's a process that does ignore some of that common sense that perhaps we're speaking to tonight with respect to why selling low when we bought high kind of thing. And that certainly is a case here when you look at the totality of time over which we've owned this property. But effectively, we are following the order of the state in the dissolution process to sell these properties off. You do have it within your prerogative to change the direction you gave staff in closed session, I believe it was at the last meeting, in pursuing this item, and that's why it's on closed session. But notwithstanding that, certainly comps and appraisals are an indicator of value. Certainly, this is a piece of property that has sat on the market. It was actually marketed by the brokerage firm that was retained by the city and sat without offers. So the actual true test of value is what somebody else is willing to pay for the property. And after sitting on the property marketed for over a year, we finally do have an offer, and thus we'll turn it over to Ms. Smith, and she can share with you the particulars of this transaction.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Metzler covered a few of the points that I think answered your questions. You used the term that it appeared to be a fire sale. And quite honestly, the RDA dissolution law did pretty much require RDAs to put their properties on and fire sale them. That was the law that was passed. Specifically, we are mandated to dispose of the properties expeditiously and try to maximize the value. That expeditious doesn't have a timeline in the law, there's not a date certain. But we're supposed to be actively marketing the properties and disposing of these assets. This property's been marketed for 18 months before we got a decent offer on it. You asked a couple of questions about if a committee had reviewed this transaction like was supposed to. What will happen is there is no committee that reviews the RDA property dispositions. This board acts first, and then it goes to an oversight board for approval. That's made up of members of different taxing entities. So this is the first step. There were no requirements to take it to committee. Just the discussions that were in closed session for the last two council meetings on this particular property. You asked about the values and the comps that were used and why those proper- You asked about the values and the comps that were used and why those properties were valued higher. And if you take a look at the broker's opinion of value that was attached, most of the properties that were used as comps actually had streets and utilities to the site and because there were no direct comps that were like this property, which actually sits behind Amerigosa and does not have direct access. So, those type of factors actually affect the value of the property. And as such, they're used as comps and then they are reduced or adjusted and that is all detailed in the broker's opinion of value. We do have the mandate to continue to try to sell these properties and this, we did get an offer early in the process, which was 30 cents a square foot compared to this offer of $1.12. And so, we think it's a fair offer and it meets the successor agency mandate of selling as quickly as we can and trying to maximize value.
Then one other thing, we do have 29 properties, so this is just one of 29. So, I was concerned that someone else was going to get this as a fire sale deal and if we don't have the exact timing, but we have to show that we're trying to sell the property, we would have 28 others and so that was my concern. Why this went out of the 29? Why couldn't we hold it off a couple, like I suggested 45 more days to see if we had another bidder? I've been looking around to see if anyone else would like to bid on something like this, if it's possible, because the less, the more we get, the less money we owe. And so, that was my concern and I didn't want to just make it seem like we're trying to gift stuff up, gift it, when we have 28 other properties.
We, we started the dissolution process with 29 properties. We've actually disposed of 11 via transfer to the city for government purposes. We've actually sold six others. We have five that we're in negotiations for and we have six that are still open on the market that we've had no interest in, similar to this one. So, there's really only six properties that are like this property, not really getting any offers, any attention and we're still actively marketing them. So, from a dissolution standpoint, we're actually very much on track as far as meeting our mandate to liquidate those 29.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Comment, Madam Mayor? When the city disposes of city-owned property, it's required to share the proceeds with other taxing entity, well, it's actually required to notify the taxing entities to see if they have a use for the property. This is not being disposed of, a city-owned property, it's redevelopment. Where does the proceeds of the sale go to?
They are held in successor agency coffers to pay off enforceable obligations that are approved on the ROPS and if additional funds remain, they are remitted to the county to be distributed to the taxing entitaries, entities in the old RDA project area.
Not up to distribute it or divide it, totally out of our hands once we sell the property, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of C5 and C11.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Negretti, second by councilmember Kennedy. All those in favor to approve consent items C5 and C11?
Aye.
Well, before that, I'm going to vote two different ways for C5 and C11, so I'd like to move item C5, have a different vote for item C11, so that's, I'm not just going to vote for both in one, one hit, so.
Hasn't the motion already been approved?
For 5 and 11, we had a first and a second, but not a, all those in favor. So, do you want to, how about if we have a, a motion for C5?
Substitute motion, C5 approval.
Okay, second?
Aye.
I have a motion by councilmember Negretti, second by councilmember Gomez to approve consent item number C5. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for item C5 consent calendar. And then now we have C11, do I have a motion?
I move item C11.
That was a motion to approve?
No, I move item C11. I'm going to vote opposite. So, I moved and there's a second and then there's a call to the question.
Somebody please.
Do you have a motion to approve it? I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
That's the motion I already made.
Okay, so, well, the motion to, your motion died then. And so now, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by, motion by councilmember Kennedy, a second by councilmember Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we move on to written communications.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just, just a comment for general information.
Yes.
Because this is a sale of property, it is required.
This is a point of order, we've already discussed this.
Required to be discussed in closed session with the entire council. So, those of us who didn't engage in this discussion only because it's already been discussed thoroughly and we decided to bring it forward as a motion, so just for everybody's information.
This point of privilege, Kennedy, you weren't even involved in that, you were gone.
I will move on to written communications now. Item D1, adoption of a unified city logo. Madam Clerk, with your recommendation.
That the city council adopt a unified city logo for marketing purposes while the city seal continues to be used to certify official records such as clerk's documents, resolutions and proclamations as well as, as well as for city council business.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this came out at our last meeting. There was some extensive discussion, a presentation by staff. We don't have another presentation, but it was continued partially because there was some concerns raised by Mayor Protem Cox, as I recall, and others about the use of the seal versus the use of the logo. So, staff has clarified that in the staff report as far as when the seal would be used versus when the logo would be used. And then if this meets approval of the council, that would then be expanded into a full policy manual so that staff knows when the appropriate uses are for the seal versus the appropriate uses for the logo and then how they can incorporate that logo into their individual departments and programs so that we maintain the continuity that we're seeking through this action. Ultimately, staff is available to answer any additional questions you may have, but we brought the information forward hoping for a decision tonight.
Madam Mayor, I'm the one who missed the meeting when we had that discussion or missed that part of the meeting. And I guess, my only question is, all the work and time and effort that was put into this.
This is point of order, we're not discussing anything but the topic at hand.
You're interrupting, please.
No, I'm not, I'm using parliamentary procedures.
That's the topic at hand, is it not?
Okay.
So, my question is, after all this time and work, why we have a choice of one? That hardly seems like a choice. Is that the one and only thing we came up with or looked at or one and only thing the council is going to pick from?
So, when this was developed, it went through a very iterative process, ultimately landing on that, that shape and those colors. The choices that were presented at the last meeting had more to do with the, with the slogan underneath and we'd be happy to bring forward, if it's the council's desire, some of the other options that were considered. I know that staff who worked on this project believe this is our, is our best option, but if the council would like to view other options, we certainly could bring those forward at a later meeting.
Well, staff isn't elected by the city and we are. I don't know, I just have a problem with it. I'd just like to know what else we've got to look at.
Well, shall we, had staff come up with something else?
Well, not come up with, but there must have been other things they looked at. Second place, a third place?
Yeah, there certainly were. It's not so much that there was a second place or third place as the original sort of V design with these building blocks was more two-dimensional and we were attempting to make it have a three-dimensional appearance, an appearance of motion, an appearance of building blocks, if you will. But certainly, we can bring those forward if the council wants to give additional direction. We can go back to the consultant and tweak or adopt a different version of a very similar shape, whatever is the council's pleasure.
Want to make a motion or suggestion on what we do next?
Not the only person who has a thought on this.
My, Madam Mayor, the only thoughts that I had, I filled out the questionnaire that was given to me. There was some, there was input, but I went back and looked at it a second time and read it very carefully because it didn't indicate to me that we were leading to a logo. It did a lot of things, but that wasn't one of them. When we got presented the logo, it was unveiled and here, here's your logo. The input from the public was, on the logo was apparently in the form of the questionnaire, except in reading the questionnaire, it doesn't say there's a logo. I, I want to, it may be something that if the majority of the council likes it, great. I don't have any particular, anything that I would want to submit. I like the city seal fine. I don't think it's particularly outdated or bad or makes the city look bad. I'm not sure why we have this, except staff is very correct that we don't need nine or 10 logos. And I don't know how it happened and I don't know how it came about, but we need to settle on one logo, whatever it is. But I would like to see some public input, business people input, chamber and actually a logo, not a questionnaire that doesn't mention the logo. So, I, I, I'm not happy with it. But that's just me.
I'd just like to know how much more manpower and hours we're going to be spending on the logo, if that's the case, and how much has been expended since it seems like, it doesn't seem to be a consensus or happiness.
The original contract was $5,000. I don't, I think we went over that slightly just because we had a, an additional iteration that we asked for some colors, color variants on, but I'm not 100% sure on that. As far as the hours, I, I don't know. And on a go-forward basis, at this point, no additional hours will be spent unless we receive some kind of further direction from the council to do anything.
Well, since we are not in agreement for this logo, shall we just say that we would like to have something else presented to us?
No, that's okay, I like it okay, it's, nothing wrong with it. I just, I just, this is all we have to pick from, I don't understand. I think if.
That sounds good.
Submit some ideas, I don't care.
Let the public have some input into this.
Did the city staff poll each council member so that those ideas were thrown out to the front because it seems we just spent $5,000 and we're going to go to a second set of $5,000 or whatever to get input from us now? Or was this the way it should have been? Did we kind of know or anticipate this?
So, what was asked of both the public, the staff and the council was just what are your impressions of the city? What's its history, where is it going? I don't remember all of the questions, but we were trying to get more of a feeling about what the city is and what it's going to become. Sue, do you want to add to that?
I just feel like, I want to share with you that 608 people shared their opinions and it came from a variety of sources. There was a community needs assessment where over 500 and some people responded and then we also had an employee survey where over 160 employees responded. And then we did a stakeholder logo survey, which is the survey that Mayor Protem Cox is referring to, where over 33 people responded. And that was included the Chamber Board of Directors, the city council, our planning commission was invited to participate, as well as other business leaders. So, I just, I just wanted to share with you that we did receive input from over 608 community members.
So, all of those people that participated, they picked this one?
No, what we did is.
See it. See it, did they?
The people that, that looked at it were internal. I, I guess what, yeah.
That's the whole point. There was no mention in the, in the questionnaire that I have that we ought to choose a logo. There was no mention, do you have a design in mind? There was no question to the employees, I talked to them, about picking a logo or changing. That logo came from a very few people and the only people who saw it was when it was unveiled in this council chamber. So, I, I, I get a little nervous when we talk about those dozens or hundreds of people that input when they had no idea that this was going to be a new logo.
In the logo survey, it did ask people to give their concepts. It asked for visual representations that you think you would like to see in a logo concept. That was the very last question, just wanted to clarify that.
And those were submitted and we got to see those?
Um, well.
We need to stop.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we're doing. The last step of the process was always to bring it back to the council for, for decisions. If the council wants to see more of the process, then certainly we can bring that forward.
What I would have asked is, all that information, if it would have been a part of, mine is fine to get a thick one, a thick, full of paper with all this so I can see. I don't know about them, but I like to have that information beforehand, that way I know what's going on.
I'd just like to see more of the ideas that came out of that survey. I mean, couldn't have just come up with one. There had to be a group of concepts or a group of images that came out of all those concepts.
What we tried to do was ask people their views of the city. What are your strengths? What do you think our unique attributes are? What do you think sets Victorville apart? Where do you think we lead the high desert? What do you think makes us better than other high desert cities? And those came in as concepts. And then we employed a graphic designer who does this for a living to try to help us convey that visually. That's what, you know, we, we went to a, an expert who does this for a living and you see many cities are converting and they have a city seal as well as a marketing logo and that's what we were trying to do. So, it wasn't that we specifically said, do you think we should have the I-15 in the logo? Or anything like that. It was what, what do you think visually should be communicated conceptually? As soon as you look at the, at the logo, what should we be saying about the city? And what came out of that was growth, progress, innovation. And then the challenge is, how do you convey that visually? What, what would you do to, to convey that visually? And what you see is, is an idea of a concepts with the building blocks. Also, the, one of the most unique attributes we have is that we have the airport. Not enough people know about the airport and what we do at the airport and what sets us apart as far as the airport. So, then you also see the aviation, a nod to aviation in that logo as well. So, these are the types of things, they were concepts that were translated into visual representation.
Could we see the examples that the graphic designer submitted so that we can weigh in on that?
We absolutely can do that. This was never intended to be a, here's your logo, take it or leave it. We recognize that although it is a relatively small thing, it is something that will have a visual impact for the foreseeable future. You know, many of our items, just speaking sort of generally, many of our items are things we deal with every day and we bring them forward. We know roughly what you would like to see in the items as far as information and, you know, there's been times that we've given you too much information and we've tried to scale it back. This is a unique item that's before you tonight that we took a stab at. This is what, you know, the folks that worked on this believe is, is the best option and we brought it forward not knowing what the reaction would be. I think we've heard. I think we've heard a clear reaction. And if it's the council's desire to see some of the other options that were looked at, considered, and have additional input, certainly we can do that. But we just need that direction to do that. We're happy to, you know, do, to bring you into the process at an earlier point, if you will, if, if that's the desire. We just didn't know, and so we presented it as, as what I think at least...
I appreciate the staff, what they've done. We, we hired a consultant, and I guess the rest of the council talked to the individual. I didn't. I didn't even know they were working on it. We have a graphic designer. I never saw anything. I guess I missed a lot of meetings. I want to see them. I don't see anything wrong with that. There's no urgency here. If we end up with this is the best design, it's the best design, but it strikes me as odd that we have all of these hundreds of people that weighed in on it, and then what the council got was an unveiling of, here's your new logo, take it or leave it kind of thing. I don't work that way. Somebody mentioned before, we're the one that gets elected. We ought to have some say-so on, rather than here it is, vote for it. We should have an input. If we hired some people, they should have talked to the members of the council. What do we want? What do we see? We've probably talked to more people in this community than anybody, and I have a great idea of what the people want to see in the community. It might not be the same as the other council, but I'd like to hear from the other council members. And so far, I don't see any urgency. I'd like to just put it off, have a chance to have some conversation, share what the graphic designer submitted, share what the consultant submitted. I'd like to see what they proposed. I haven't seen any of that. And I fault. If it is, I'm sorry. I just don't remember missing a meeting.
Graphic designers are wonderfully creative people, a lot more creative than me. If you asked me to come up with a design, I'd be lost. I wouldn't have any idea how to do it. See, if those concepts, they could probably come up with three or four different ways to communicate that with a logo. I'd just like to see some...
So that's the direction that we will be taking then?
I, if, I'm not sure what the direction is, I'll say.
Well, my, I'll take a try at this, that this, there's no urgency in adopting the logo, that it be put off, and that's all this information that staff has gathered, please forward it to me, maybe the other council member don't want it. I'd like to review it all.
I would like to review it.
That was my expression too, even if it's much thicker than today's agenda.
Okay, that's our final decision. Thank you. I, I did have one card here that was given to me during this time, this item. Maggie Martin, beg it.
You know what? I got to tell you, I look at that, that does nothing for me. It doesn't tell me about the, it doesn't have one thing in there emblematic of the history of Victorville. Show me Rockview Park, show me D Street, show me downtown, show me a Joshua Tree, like what we have there. That's, that's, to me, is very symbolic. I know I'm in Victorville. I know I'm home when I see that. I'm never going to know I'm home when I'm looking at that. No offense to the people who, you know, we all have different viewpoints about where we want, what direction we want to see the city move in. For the most part, I'm not on the same page with everybody else with that. And I feel like I read the backup material, you know, on, on that item. And I, when I heard the word or I read the word branding, I'm like, what are we, Nike? We got to brand the city? Is that just some fancy glossed-over word for what? Pimp it out? I don't know. You know, to try and make it, make it look like it's something different than anywhere else? I don't, I don't get that. I'm with, I'm with Mayor Cox, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Cox. I, I would like to see options, number one, whether you guys decided on them or not. Just give you some options that I, that I think would reflect maybe a little better than that. But also, I, I would like to see that the public does have some input. We are the citizens. We are why you are all, are here on the dais and in the city hall, for the citizens. So I would like to see that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was the only card that I had. So we have a consensus then to have staff?
Yeah, I would call the question, formal vote.
You have a question?
It's parliamentary procedure to call the question.
I'm not sure there was a formal motion, but you could certainly have a motion to basically have staff provide more information on this, get a second, and then have a vote on it. I think there was just a consensus to staff to do that.
I think I'll go ahead and make that motion. Second?
There a second, Dave?
Second.
I have a...
What is the motion?
To just have more information provided by staff with respect to options and what was previously provided.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, second by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor of bringing the item back with more information?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Just for clarity's sake, I didn't hear in the motion that you wanted the item to come back, just for the time being, just to be provided information. But I have clarification on whether or not you want it to actually come back to a public agenda, or if you just want the information to mull over, make it some other time? I'm a little unclear at this point.
I'd like to turn the, the graphic artists free. I'd like to let them have the free rein to come up with some ideas of how they think we can, I think the message underneath is fine. I like that. Victorville belongs in it, probably a V, but I just think they ought to have some freedom to come up with some choices. I don't know how much more information we want. We got all these...
Haven't seen any, so would you?
Have no information. That's my impression.
None of us do.
Okay.
Doug, I suspect it'll just come back at a later agenda once staff is, once council has seen the information.
Okay. Want to take a bet on that, or?
Has no direction. I don't know.
Well, give us all the information he...
There you go.
Okay, that concludes that. All right, then we move on to item D2. Contract amendment number one for Wildlife Hazard Assessment Project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors approve amendment one to the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with LSA Associates, Inc. for Wildlife Hazard Assessment Project Number ES-15-044, increasing the compensation by $13,790 for a total contract amount not to exceed $128,069.
Move approval? Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tem Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Establishing a Community Facilities District and Authorizing the Levy of Special Taxes. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution 17-061, authorizing staff to proceed with the actions necessary to consider the establishment, establishments of Community Facilities District Number 2018-001, Victorville Lead Track.
I have a question. Is this just for the maintenance of, of the track itself? That?
Yes, this is a financing mechanism for the maintenance and capital recovery of the actual rail and related facilities.
Explain the capital recovery to me, please.
I'm sorry, say that again.
You said for capital recovery. This is the redevelopment agency put this in? Redevelopment agency no longer exists. Who's going to recover the capital?
That's actually going to become the responsibility of the Financing District, the CFD. Because the redevelopment agency is no longer, it was determined that this, because it was sitting in a city right-of-way, was a city asset. We had actually funded the O&M and any physical repairs relying on the ROPS process. That no longer is available to us, and because of that, it's required staff to pursue coming up with some kind of financing mechanism, if not turn the entire rail system over to private ownership. That option didn't bear fruit, so the CFD became the, the best, most viable financing option where you effectively have the property owners that get the benefit of the rail. You actually get them to pay through the property tax assessment process, a levy, an amount that then gets to be used to pay for the maintenance, and then any physical repairs that either have broken or depreciated over time. There effectively is accounts set up to, to help fund that.
Keith, question, and I'm, I'm reading the staff report that talks about the information that's been reviewed and discussed with the property owners. Is there a voting process? You're saying that there's a 71% likelihood or that they're going to, but they vote on it?
There is a voting process. I'm going to actually defer to Sophie Smith, who's been the lead on this and in the weeds, and she also has a representative from NBS as well here to talk about all that's required and, and kind of why this is on, on the agenda.
And it would only be voted on by the businesses' people in that district.
That's correct.
It's not something the whole city would be affected by.
Good evening. I will turn it over shortly to Mr. Greg Davidson of NBS. It's a consultant firm that specializes in special tax, tax district formations. Up on the screen, you'll see all of the affected properties for this proposed CFD. And tonight's action will authorize staff to take actions to start moving forward with the formation of this CFD. And the ballots will go out via mail to the property owners. As staff and with NBS, we have had extensive meetings, conversations, conference calls with representatives from each of the properties, discussing the predicament, the predicament we were left in when the RDA could not fund this project and the maintenance of this rail any longer. And so we do have an indication that the required vote will be met, and I will turn it over to Mr. Davidson for specifics about how that voting works.
Good evening. I think that was a great introduction. And to answer your question, yes, it would be the property owners that are affected by the special tax, and that would eventually be paying the special tax, that will vote on the measure. There are no registered voters within the proposed boundaries of the CFD, so it becomes a property owner election, and each property owner gets one vote per acre or portion thereof. We've received no opposition to the CFD at this time. We have three of the five property owners stating that they are in favor, which gets us to the 71% approval. And we have the remaining two property owners that have not given us any direction of which way they would cast their ballot. Regardless of how they cast their ballot, the district would still pass at this time based on property owner direction that we've received.
Thanks, Barry. Depending on whether there's an improved property there versus unimproved land?
It does. The way that the billing methodology is written, it allows for rail-served property to be paying the tax. And so we have an initial tax to do some much-needed improvements that the rail engineer has determined, so that'll happen over the first two years, then that tax goes away. Then we have a base tax that everybody, all five property owners would contribute to. If more monies are needed from that point on for a given fiscal year, then we would hit our tier-one property, which is the rail-served property that receives more than 100 cars to their location. And then if we needed more money, we can go to the second tier of rail-served property, and finally, the third tier. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Specifically, Mr. Kennedy, about the undeveloped properties, they would, that are on the map and are not yet developed, they can be added into the rail CFD when developed and if they become rail-served, but they would not be assessed until they're developed. The vacancies would not.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Move approval? Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember, Mayor Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We move on to item D4. Presentation to Approve Awards to Purchase 10 Vehicles. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the recommended awards to purchase 10 vehicles under project number CC-18-027.
Questions?
I do. Just for the benefit of the public, can we have feedback on the 10 purchases of the vehicles from city staff?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
For the benefit of the public, for the 10 vehicle purchases, can you give us a synopsis of the purchasing? Why this is required? Is this an annual thing, five years?
Okay, yes. So there's a number of vehicles that we've identified citywide, whether it's in the water district, and it looks like in most of these cases, they're water district vehicles. Looks like there's one Parks operation vehicle. And effectively, this follows our budgeting process. We identified as a part of the budget vehicles needed to perform the services, whether it's an expanding responsibility or it's replacing old vehicles, is one of the fundamental reasons why we're purchasing these vehicles.
Thank you. No further questions.
Keith, are these replacements or are these new vehicles? I mean, they're new, obviously, but do they replace existing vehicles?
I believe so, Doug. Do you know the particulars? I think there's a chart in here.
A nod from Georgie, looks like he knows.
Let's see, page 319.
And what do we do with the old ones? I mean, they're not, they're not trash. They're, do we sell them?
If we can continue to use them, we will. Otherwise, we'll eventually surplus them. Sometimes they're timed out for carb-related reasons, and then we'll actually surplus them out.
Most of these are pickup trucks, whether they're half-ton up to, you know, one-ton, whatever it may be, but they're, they're certainly older vehicles that have, take a lot of repairs. But to some other departments in the city, they're new vehicles. It may have vehicles back from the early 90s. And so we repurpose the vehicles if it makes sense for the vehicle it's replacing. There is one new vehicle that I see on there, and that's to support some existing crews we have coming on. That is shown on the spreadsheet in the very back. There's four sheets back there, and it identifies in the bold print the, the vehicles that are awaiting council approval. And you'll see a check mark on there, the ones that are new and the ones that are replacement vehicles.
So if we have surplus and we can't refurbish them and reuse them, what do we do? Sell them?
Then we'll auction them.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D5. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Fire Services. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Any subject action or further direction for staff is at the discretion of the city council.
Thank you. I do have some cards. First one is Travis Agiri. And after, you're pulling it? Oh, thank you. Sean Solis. And after Sean, Dennis Jones. Pulling yours too. Dennis Jones. Patricia Perry.
My name is Patricia Perry. I live at 12737 Central Road in the city of Apple Valley. I'm here to discuss an issue that I've been dealing with, and I'm asking you, why and where's the excuses and why the red tape? I bought a house here in the Apple Valley. I live on Central. The, the street behind me is called Pajuski Road, and crossing that is Little Beaver. Within my alley, I have a lot of activity that starts from 9:00. Within my alley, I have a lot of activity that starts from 9:00 until 2:00 in the morning.
I'm sorry, are you speaking on item D5?
No, you just, you called me up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you're, I'm sorry, I called you before we got to that section. I'll call you when we get to section E1.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you.
Those were the only cards that I had for D5. Any comments by councilmembers? Discussion, comments?
I, I, if I might, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The, I think we have to, we, the city, has to move rather, have to move rather quickly in regard to the options that we have. First of all, I don't know what the final count was, 62.14%, Madam Clerk, or something like that, that voted for the half-cent sales tax. Appreciate the support of a large segment of the society and individuals who were supporting the city on that. The issue that I've talked about over and over was local control. People do come to the elected officials, every council member sitting here, to make requests or suggestions about the local service. And I think that, at least in my opinion, the 62% yes affirmed that the council would like to have local control. At least, it confirms it to me. Every council member has their own opinion. We now have a contract that expires June 30, 2018. And I think all the council needs to know the options that we have, and from the city manager, what those options are, and the possibility of achieving them, whatever they are, and the timeframe that we will need to accomplish whatever it is that we need to accomplish. But I'm, I want to hear from staff on this before I make a recommendation.
So, these items were researched in great detail, I'll say, about nine months ago or so, six to nine months ago. Effectively, you still have the same options that have been discussed, but perhaps you have more clarity now that the Measure K vote has been taken. There is a possibility for a county contract that could be negotiated before the end of the termination date of June 30. I have no doubt that that is one of the options that's available. In previous meetings, the county fire chief had indicated that it would not be a contract extension, but rather a new contract that would include the capture of any unfunded liabilities at the end of it, sort of having a tail at the end if there are retirement costs that go beyond whatever the length of our contract is. One option is a city-provided fire department, which the city had up until, I think it was about 2008. That's something that we had previously indicated could be done by June 30, 2018. It would not be easy if that's the council's direction. Our immediate action, in fact, what I would recommend is that you give some flexibility to move quickly on this would be to hire some kind of an interim fire chief to assist the city staff with building that department, if you will. I believe, well, one of the options considered in the report is to hire some consultant or consulting firm to assist with the recruitments. It would be tight, it would be difficult, but we believe it could be done. The CAL FIRE contract is off the table at this point, they've indicated that. There is some question, I guess, that if this contract expires completely, whether or not they could bid at that time. But I don't know how you get there without having some service provider, so. And then the final option would be county fire annexation, something that was considered back in January of this year. I can't make any promises as to whether or not that could occur prior to June 30, 2018. I am confident that it could occur prior to June 30 of 2019. And if that were our pursuit, my estimation is that county fire would extend the contract for a year if, in fact, we were going through the annexation process. Your remaining options, there's been a tremendous amount of research done on each one of them, and we're happy to provide answers to any questions you may have at this point.
Madam Mayor, I have some comments. This is a disappointing situation that we find ourselves in. As a city, you can't go from city services to county, back to city, back to county, whatever it is, without switching costs and other issues. This is, this is, we had our own fire department. Quite frankly, it's very expensive. We defer and defer and kick things down the road as far as facility upgrades, personnel decisions, and equipment. I believe we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, six fire engines and one of the oldest ones from the 80s, and we only have one new one. That's just the actual fire trucks. You talk about outdated facilities, you talk about breathing apparatuses that we just paid for. These are high-ticket items, and our revenues do not keep up in a linear fashion with our population growth. So, we have a lot of unfunded requirements when it comes to the fire department. So, I, I'm very disappointed that we're here today, quite frankly. And my hope would be, because I'm looking at, as part of the agenda items, the backup materials, four major policy choices. Make no changes, return to a city-provided fire department. CAL FIRE was number three, but forget that for now. And then the annexation into the county fire district. Every one of those options has its pros and cons. But one of the things that I'd like to do, and I'd request the support of the council, is for us to direct the city manager to return, to deal with county fire, or basically to renegotiate one more time to make sure that we have their best and final offer to consider before we even move forward at all. And that can be done in a timely manner. But what I'm effectively saying is, I'd like to know what a five-year and a 10-year contract would look like, and recognize that the city is after cost assurances as we go forward, so we know what we're gonna be paying for. But also, the firefighters, who we value tremendously, 10 years is some comfort knowing your job is, you're on a 10-year contract. There's some moving parts in there, for sure. But on the other hand, just if we do go down the road of the county fire, which from all I've heard, the last 10 years has been a great relationship with county fire, that was never an issue. But if we were to go to another county contract for another five or 10 years, whatever it is, we have got to program some serious upgrades to whether it's the facilities or whether it's to the equipment, and plan that out every year. If it's not every year, it's every other year. Something has got to be done, but not doing anything year after year after year is disappointing. We've got about 50 firefighters in the city, a city of 120,000 people. That, that is sad. And heaven forbid, my family needs to call 911, because some of my friends have had to do that, and they have experienced difficult situations. When somebody's having a seizure, you don't care how far the farthest firehouse is or, you know, the response times, you never have thought about it. But this is the kind of thing where we're stretched out so thin. So, what I think I'm seeing here is a regional approach that covers a large geographic area. Having a city-only fire department, I understand what that's all about. I understand local control or the idea of that. But effectively, what you're talking about is the cost, the simple cost of having your own fire department was not desirable 10 years ago. It is not desirable, in my opinion, now. And I'd really like to work in, with the county again, one more time before we go down this road, and ask the support for the council to do that, so we make sure that we can cross off contracting with the county if that is not available.
No, I absolutely agree with getting a last, final offer from county fire. I think we owe it to ourselves, to the citizens, a tiny group of citizens who actually did vote on our sales tax measure. But we owe it to all the citizens of this city, whether they voted or not, to have a full understanding and fully explore quickly the cost and the actual working of a city fire department. I've heard, I've heard multiple views on that. There are a number of people who were involved with the former city fire department who were sorry to see it go, who didn't think it was a great idea. I don't know why the council decided what they did at that time. I know we have two former chiefs close by who have both expressed some interest in, in helping us get a full understanding of this, and I think we ought to take advantage of those people. They're available. Both retired. But I think, I think there is more information for us to gather, and I think we owe it to ourselves to gather it all. I would say do both, quickly.
Well, I believe that the bottom line was cost. And we never did say that we were not happy with county fire. We have always praised them for the outstanding work that they do. But, but it's the cost. And we're still trying to battle that and trying to decide which way to go with it. I understand, yes, we can still negotiate with county fire and see if maybe we can come to some kind of an agreement, as Councilmember Negrete pointed out. And then again, we can go with our own city fire department. I've heard the same thing. I've heard from a lot of people that tell me that they were very happy with our own fire department. They could not understand why we switched over to county, and then all they ever heard was us complaining that it is too costly. But of course, I haven't actually done a lot of research on it, and I don't have all the information that's necessary. But at this point, what I'm looking at is the cost for us to maintain our own fire department, or if we go with county fire, what are the options that we have from them? So, that's where I'm at.
Have something, Ms. Gomez? Doesn't.
Thank you for answering for me, but that's not my answer. So, I'd like to know the cost expended that was put up on this failed election, or at least the approximation. And in January, when the city clerk has the actual bill, I also would like to have a copy of that. Also, 62% or 61.4%, which was 1% of the electoral vote that came out, that's to give you a percentage or a perspective. It's not enough votes for the last 2016 election, so that should show you that it wasn't a lot of people that went out there to vote. The other thing that I also like to share is that I've actually heard the opposite, that the city has not kept up with the facilities or the equipment, and that it has, it has not done its job in the last 10 decades. And how do we expect the city to do the job in the next 10 decades? The definition of insanity is to do the same thing and to expect different results. I'd also like to share that I've heard a lot about the city fire and why we changed. It was costly, and it was best to bring us back to what we have now, which was county. And there was a lot of threats of lawsuits. So, maybe we, as a council, need to do more research and find out why we switched from city to what we have now. And lastly, I would ask to support the LAFCOP process and to continue with fire. Since we're talking a lot about cost, when you annex, what would the cost be? Thank you.
Some comments, Madam Mayor, if I can. I, I don't, I don't want to be negative toward, toward every comment that's made. I agree with most of them. You know, having a five-year, 10-year contract is wonderful. We have 500 employees that would love that. I don't know, we have a contract with the police department that expires every June. We don't have to have a five- or 10-year contract. So, I think I'm not gonna be an easy sell for a 10-year contract simply because people want a 10-year contract to ensure their future. You get it by hard work. We have information that says it's cheaper to operate our own fire department. What happened back then, I don't know. If we talk about the votes that turned out, there were people who voted. You can go back and criticize, not enough people turned out, may be our fault. You know, we've had people elected council with less votes than that. So, at least they voted. We need to find out quickly the last and best offer, which means I would not want the city manager to have any prolonged negotiations. I don't want to be in a corner on this thing. I don't think we can afford not to have an interim fire chief. We need to move forward with that. And if we, if we have last and best offer for a contract with the county, fine, that's good. But we don't contract with the fire chief, we contract with the county board of supervisors. And I want to see that negotiation started with people who can contract to provide the service. So, I, I think the city manager ought to be authorized to pursue this, to get a last and best offer as quickly as possible, and also to hire an interim chief to be prepared to move if this contract doesn't work out, because we need to move, and we need to move very, very quickly. Otherwise, we're going to regret that we didn't start moving six months ago. So, I encourage the council, do both. Authorize the manager to immediately begin negotiations. Last and best offer as soon as possible. Authorize the manager to move ahead, seeking an individual who has knowledge in the fire department on what it would take to put our fire department together. And we have the dollars in front of us. They can be shaped a little bit to see if it's gonna be more or less expensive than what they put out. We had really good figures here. I don't think they've changed that much. And I think we need to move as quickly as possible. We need to know. That's a motion.
Second.
That, wait a minute. I'm gonna make a motion and ask for a second. There may be that it's up to the chair if she wants a public discussion on this thing.
One second, motion, we can still have discussion.
Can we hear the motion one more time?
Both.
Both? What?
Pursue a last and best, final offer from the county.
Yes.
Gathering the information we need to make a decision. Right, Jim?
Yes.
Second.
Go ahead and speak.
If he's gonna speak, I'd like to speak too, so.
Yeah, I'll let you.
Thank you.
No, I'd like to just say that, Odamahia, Assistant Chief here in Victorville. I'd just like to say, you know, we talk about the cost. The cost increased when we, county fire stepped in and took over and provided service here in Victorville. One of the biggest costs you saw was the providing of ALS. We added paramedics. You didn't have paramedics in the past. And so, what we came in is what we brought you, paramedics. You didn't have to go out and hire and train them. We brought a complete system into you, and it's an upgrade to the community. Everybody has paramedics around you. Victorville was one of the few cities in the area that did not have paramedic service. So, that's what we provided. So, that's why you see the increased cost. You talk about the fire chiefs that ran the, have past experience. They don't have experience in paramedic services. The requirements for paramedic services are huge. You have to hire a doctor, because now you administer drugs, unless you choose to go back to BLS. And then that would be a downgrade in the services you guys provide. So, those are things that you have to think of and take into consideration when you're starting your own fire department. It's not about just hiring firemen and bringing them and putting them on a fire engine. You have to hire a doctor. You have to hire a nurse. The nurse has to come in and be able to provide the CE training for your paramedic services. So, there's more to it than just saying, hey, I want to need to replace firemen to go put out fires. There's a whole program. In the past, you had paper reports, and now everything's computerized. You have a whole program that has to be, excuse me, dealt with, with dealing with computerized programming, and all those things that none of your fire chiefs have experience in. Those are the things that have changed. Those are the things that have changed in the ten years that you've been out of the fire business that we've had, that we demonstrate on a daily basis for you. So I'd just like to say that one, take in consideration, and look into the experts and who you're looking at, and, and getting guidance for your fire service. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
I'd like to comment, since he doesn't know who we're talking to. How do you know they don't have experience? That's ridiculous.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments on that also. I know it's going to be, have a lot of complexity to it if we chose to go city fire. But there's, and I'm sure the chief or, or whatever his title is, he'll know a lot more than me, but I do know one thing. We were willing to add fifteen firefighters, and the fire union was against it, okay? And I'd like somebody like himself to come up here and explain that to me, okay? Because we weren't in the market to change out of county. We wanted to add to it. I, it just, I, it just baffles me what, why the union would come out against it. That just, I, I just don't get it. So if somebody could enlighten me from the fire department, I, I would really like that. I thought that was a great move by us. I went to In-N-Out the other day to get lunch after work. I spent seven bucks. I dropped two pennies, or the guy did in front of me. I said, sir, you dropped two pennies? He said, I don't want them. That would have paid Measure K. It's ridiculous. Two lousy pennies. And I understand out of the forty-five hundred, or forty-five thousand registered voters, only five thousand, a little more than five, I think it was fifty-three hundred people came out. I don't, I don't understand that either. The people knew about it. They had to. The ballots went out in the mail. It wasn't the city's responsibility to, to really, you know, round everybody up. The county sent sample ballots to everybody. So they knew. It didn't pass. I'm actually so disappointed in that. And, and to top it all off, we could have had fifteen more firefighters, okay? And, and the, again, what, why would the union be against that? I just don't get it. I, I just don't get it. Is it, was it a conflict with wanting to add police officers also? I would just like some answers. And I know, I, I don't look to you guys for it. I want, I want the fire department to come up with something of an answer to that. I did a job right on Lorraine two weeks ago at the entrance to the fairgrounds, and I made an idiot out of myself holding a yes-on-measure-K sign, because I've complained constantly about people showing signs on the sidewalks, have I not? But I did it, and I was getting thumbs up from firemen coming in and out of that station, okay? So it, it, it's just baffling to me how all that, how all that went down. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie? Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, council members and staff, my name is Travis Aguirre, and I'm a captain with San Bernardino County Fire Department. It's an honor to be here and have a chance to speak to you and to share some thoughts on this important topic.
Sir, can you get closer to the mic? I can't hear you.
Sorry. How about there? Better? Sorry. It's an honor to be here and to speak and have a chance to speak to you and to share some thoughts on this important topic. I stand before you with many behind me who have and do serve this city. Many of us still live in the area and know what a city has, that a city has every right to consider its options about how to provide such a critical service. However, I feel confident speaking for those of us once employed by the city that one of the options discussed is not viable to us. One of the council members recently expressed the thoughts that the city may want to relaunch its own fire department, and that many of us old Victorville guys would jump on the chance to come back and work for the city. Please know that this is further from the truth. Please know that we have a better memory than that. First in 2008, when the council voted to disband the Victorville Fire Department, and our chief stormed out of the building, never looked back. We remember how San Bernardino County welcomed us with open arms. Further, we remember all the problems that got us to the stressed relationship with the city management. We recall how the city blocked our captains from being union members, creating a wedge between our crews. We recall having a challenge, a city ordinance that as city employees, we could not discuss city business with council members. We recall how our FLSA time was paid incorrectly, and that the department and the city would not pay for travel time, even when training was deemed mandatory. We recall how the department denied integration into the modern fire service by resisting our desire to become paramedic-level EMS agency. And we recall how many times that we had to wait for an ambulance to come and arrive, and that we struggled to help a patient with basic life support alone. And we even, and even if a brand-new Victorville Fire Department was to relaunch and eliminate many of these issues, we all know how the city struggled financially to properly fund the department. We have been with the county for nearly ten years, and we have seen the advantages in the County Fire's regional service. Because Victorville directly borders Atalanta, Hesperia, and the communities of Spring Valley, Lake, and Apple Valley, what happens on one side of the street can immediately become a problem on the other side. We have seen the fleets to the crews from the county fires and the other division responding to Victorville when we experience a major event. Mutual aid agreements only go so far, and when the high desert has a big fire, knowing that our own people are automatically coming with us means a lot. Lastly, we have seen how the city can save money in the long run, especially if it chooses annexation. We are taxpayers too, and it's a matter of good, efficient government looking to provide the best level of service at the best price. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maggie, Martin?
Good evening again. Let me just get straight to the point, make it short, sweet, simple, kind of girl I am. I, I'm old school. If it's not broke, don't fix it. I would suggest to you, first of all, let me say, Councilman Negrete, Negrete, thank you. I'm right with you on, on your comments about how this should be resolved. I would suggest, don't, don't contemplate just money, meaning returning to something less expensive, maybe the, a city fire, as opposed to quality. The boys that are sitting behind me right there, they, they know what they're doing. They, they've been doing it a long time. And let me tell you, as a citizen who's had to call them a few times to come fetch me from my house, to take me to the hospital, I'm with, I'm with Councilman Negrete. I don't care if it's the city fire. I don't care if it's county fire. I want a response time because I need to get there to the hospital. I need to get there now, or my loved one. So let's, I, I go, my, my, my feeling is on it is if it's not broke, don't fix it. If they're doing a good job, let's keep them. Bottom line, even if it costs us maybe just a little bit more money. I know I'm not knowledgeable like you folks about the subject matter, but if it's working, and I heard Chief Mahia run down a big, long laundry list of expertise that they have and what they have going for them. But, you know, I voted yes. I'm telling everyone here. I turned out to vote yes for Measure K. Not, not just because of them, but because of them. I want them here too. I need them here when I call on that phone. So just, let's try and maybe get past the hump of the money aspect of it, if that's possible within the city's money, you know, and look at who's going to give your citizens the best, efficient, quality service. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
The point of order, I'd like to comment before we continue with our motion. I don't see why we should hire an interim chief if this is to start our fire department. We have had eight years, and the fire conversation, the fire conversation has been stonewalled, so it's nothing, nothing new. I'd like to amend the motion to exclude the hiring of an interim chief to start a city fire, and instead to resume negotiations with LAFCO and extend the contract with a knowledge of this in mind.
Do we have a second?
Jim Hat.
We have no seconds, so your motion dies.
We have direction that we want to give the staff, and I think they need to move quickly. There's a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
That was a, the motion was by Mayor Protam Cox, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Make sure that mine announces why I voted no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D six. Recognition of deceased Victorville veterans. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That there be an ongoing agenda item at each city council meeting in recognition of Victorville veterans who have passed away.
Yes, this is my item, and the item that I put in here is for discussion. I'll start on the discussion. If nobody else wants to add to that, that's fine. My intent for putting this as something perpetual is, at the San Bernardino County Supervisors meeting, I noticed that for the month of November, they have memorial adjournments, and each council member or each supervisor in that case brings in a list or basically makes a memorabilia, so to speak, and puts the names of people that have passed away to recognize them without having to say much, and it shows up on their November Board of Agenda. And so that's something that I think we should be able to do as well, something to commemorate, commemorate their memories. And this is why I brought it to the floor. I think veterans deserve that recognition, whether it's year-long or whether it's just something in November that shows up. And as council members, we bring a name, two, three, five, ten names, and something that just shows up on the agenda. So that's why I brought this here.
Well, I, I, as, as a veteran, I can tell you that some veterans care a lot about recognition for their service, and others don't. And not every veteran wants to publicize, not for whatever personal reasons they have. For every veteran that we would identify and recognize, there'll be three that we'll miss. And I just think that's asking for trouble. There's no reason on earth to do this. If people want to announce a death and recognize someone who's passed away and the fact he's a veteran, that's why we have obituaries. I don't think the city, this is a dead loser. I, and it reminds me, it makes me think about the thing we're doing on Veterans Day, trying to recognize local veterans, because, you know, we might get twenty or thirty, and I know we've missed a hundred and fifty. I, I just, I don't think it's a good idea. I'm opposed to it.
And it doesn't have to be necessarily deceased. Maybe we have what we've been doing. If we recognize this time a hundred, maybe it would be nice to have those hundred that did want to get recognized, that filled out their application form, to not just show up that one day on November 11th for two hours, being recognized by maybe a hundred or two hundred people, but actually be seen online, not just by whoever is here and that wanted to get recognized. So I don't think this is something that costs a lot. The staff already does it. And to add that to be a part of an adjournment on a November list, I don't think is asking for too much. I think as city officials or as elected people, we have very few times where we can recognize the public for what it is they do, and since this is already something national that happens all around, happens that one day for a couple of hours. I know I have the Orinda Group consistently going around to all kinds of different meetings for veterans and coming to our meetings from Apple Valley, so that's a, a large group that I've seen that is very involved and does actually like the recognition. We actually went out to dinner, breakfast, and all ten of us went out to eat, and they were very satisfied having their free meal at Applebee's. So I don't see how this would be a dead issue, but of course, this is just me bringing something up, trying to recognize what is already recognized, but on paper, because it's not recognized on paper. And if there's no discussion, I mean, there's no need to beat a horse to death. It's clear that four council members don't see eye to eye with what's happening here, which is not a big deal. It's just something that I like to bring up, and I'll bring up again and again until one day we hopefully have a memorial adjournment. So thank you very much for the discussion, and thank you very much for all council member's support, whether it's positive or negative science or not. I think that we all have said something, so I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, there is a lot of activities for veterans that we don't get involved in. In the Elks Club, they have Veterans Appreciation Day, Veterans Dinner. They have a fundraiser for the veterans. VFW, same thing, very active club. The MVets, same thing, very involved. The American Legion, same thing, very involved. So there's a lot of organizations, including on Veterans Day, that restaurants open up to the veterans. And if there is something missing, maybe we can help, but there are so many organizations involved in this right now, and unless there's a need, need, I, I like that their own organizations are handling it, and the community, and the private organizations in the community without, without the city being involved, but I'm open to further discussion. If down the road we find out there's a need for us to be involved, then maybe we should, but right now, I don't think, I don't want to have the staff, you know, put the long list, but I think you'd be surprised at the organizations that are involved in veterans' activities and veterans' affairs. It's there. I appreciate our council member bringing it up, but right now, I don't want to turn it down. I'd like to just put it down the road a little bit to see if there's, that need is there. It may be that it's being handled. It may be that it's not, and I think we can determine at a later time, but I agree with Mr. Kennedy. I served and forgot about it for years and years and years, and it's only been the end thing to recognize veterans the last few years. And Mr. Kennedy and I have talked about us serving, as Mr. Negrete has served. And for the most part, the people that, that I deal with, unless you ask them, you wouldn't know that they're don't really talk about it.
No, no motion.
Done? Okay, I move on to item D seven. Proposed contract with San Bernardino County Fire Protection District for household hazardous waste collection services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council, after review and consideration, authorize the mayor to execute the contract with San Bernardino County Fire Protection District for disposal of, disposal of household hazardous wastes.
Questions, sir?
Question of the, Madam, but the price starts at a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. That's a five percent reduction from the current cost of a hundred and thirty-three thousand. What's the reason for these reduction?
And I don't have the answer specifically for that, so I'd have to ask Dana Armstrong to come up. She's our environmental projects manager, who has been running this program for us. This is, I know, a contract extension to one that's existing now.
Well, is this negotiated, or does that give you the, do they give you the dollar amount, and you just forward it to us?
Hello? The reduction is due in part to a number of initiatives that have happened recently. The Paint Care Initiative, which was a statewide law that required paint manufacturers to develop a program to have a, basically the producer responsibility, so now a lot of the paints, that previously there was a disposal cost associated with it, now those materials can be disposed of free of charge. Also, the e-waste is no longer a net cost to dispose of. So we've, the county has seen some savings in that regard, and they're passing those, those savings along in the contract.
Thank you. I just, I just noticed that when it started, and now that we're, the city Victorville receives approximately fifteen to seventeen thousand a year in sales, and I know about the paint and those things, and I just would have expected this number to be a little lower.
I was going to ask about that. Those, those aren't items that go to the hazardous waste site that we get back and sell? Or do they sell them and give us money, or what?
The way the e-waste is working- The way the e-waste is working currently, we do accept it at the Household Hazardous Waste Center, and we also accept it at the recycling drop-off center over on Anacapa. The city is currently managing that material directly, so we are selling that material. The city does receive the revenues from that material directly. Previously, the county, that was included in the county program that they were managing, and we said, we think we would like to handle that material ourselves, similar to what the town of Apple Valley had been doing. So we started handling and directly marketing that material.
Now, anybody, I guess, who lives in Victorville or anywhere can bring it to that site?
Yes, and we-
Electronic keyboards, screens that die.
Yes, any kind of e-waste, and we actively encourage them to do so, because at the present time, it is a revenue stream, and those revenues go back into our solid waste fund, Household Hazardous Waste line item, and it does help support the cost of this program.
Can you guess why I would have never known anything about that? And if I didn't, how many citizens would know nothing about that?
All I can say is, we do bill inserts, you know, eight or nine times a year. We have it on the back of our sanitation bills.
Do you?
We have a Facebook page. We're posting about it constantly. We're, I don't, I mean, we're trying. We're really trying to get the word out there, and I appreciate your asking about it, because then I get to tell more people about it. But yes, and it's a great program. The Household Hazardous Waste Center is pretty well-used, and we always want more people to use it, because it is the proper way to dispose of these materials.
Program.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I also have a question in regards to this item. I was looking at, the contract may be terminated by either party at any time upon 90 days or prior. Is that typical, or is it the five years require the 90-day, or is it one year? I mean, why don't we have it longer as an extension?
It's relatively typical. It's a longer-term contract, but there's really not a whole lot of cost. If we were to find a different option, or for some reason the county stopped being able to provide or wanting to provide this service, it gives us 90 days to find another option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With approval of D seven.
Motion by Councilmember Negretti, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D eight. Service provider agreement for Larry Walker and Associates for semi-annual groundwater monitoring reports, an annual compliance summary, and a pre-treatment monitoring report. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Water District Board of Directors approve a consultant professional services provider agreement and annual purchase order to Larry Walker and Associates for an amount not to exceed $43,367 for the preparation of two semi-annual groundwater monitoring reports, an annual compliance summary report, and a pre-treatment monitoring report for fiscal year 2017 through 2018.
Thank you. Questions?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Protam Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to our public comments. I do have three cards here. And Patricia Perry, I'm sorry, this is the time that you are to speak. Sorry, I called you before. After Patricia Perry is Patricia Watkins.
Hello, Town Council. My name is Patricia Perry. I live at 12737 Central Road in Apple Valley. I have a street that's behind me called Pahuski Road, and a street that's going through from one side crossing Central called Little Beaver. In this area, we're having a lot of activity that is also spreading to this area. I have where the people are coming within that area. We're messing, they're messing up the internet system. We're having where the lights are going out. There's explosions since 2012. I talked to the town of Apple Valley. I've called the police department many, many times. I'm really worried on what's going on within that area. My lights have went off where I've fallen down my backyard and skid my knee. They thought I had a heart attack. The paramedics had to come get me. Thank you very much. They left. So that's what happened to me. I have explained this to many people. The reason I came here is to let you know, because this is broadening out. I've heard people, because I've been so vocal, I've been called the N-word. They follow me to the store. I haven't been able to go to church, because they encased me. Five cars have encased me where I can't even drive. So it stopped me, because I go to church on Hisperia Road, and it's very dark down there. So my family has been worried about me. I've been to call the police department, and the reason I'm bringing it to you is because you're involved in the police department that comes to our town on the weekends. So I want them to know that this is what's going on within that area, and I want everyone to be safe. I moved here in 1990, and I went to Victor Valley College. I'm a nurse. And I've always taken care of my community, and I want it to be broadening, everybody to know what's going on within this area. And that's why I came here to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't get your address or a telephone number.
Address is 12737 Central Road.
127?
37.
37, Central Road.
Central Road in Apple Valley, California.
And your telephone number? I'm sorry. No, 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 you don't have to give me that. I'll give you this, and then if you'll hand it to the city clerk, and then we'll have it. That way we can contact you. Patricia Watkins.
I stand on behalf, my name's Patricia Watkins. I live here in Victorville. 14384 Chamber Lane Drive, Victorville, California, 92394. And I'm standing here on behalf of the city. I ride up and down Mojave, but sometimes I go back on Tiny Ridge. And I go west on Rocky Knoll Way, south. And then I go right on Mojave, west. But we can't come back in, because the island is there. So I'm asking, please, may we have that street, have that divider open? Now, if possible, if I may get a petition going for the neighbors who live there to, well, I met, I spoke with some neighbors today, and they said they would sign a petition if possible. But if you may think about it, and, you know, just think about it to see if we can have that open, so that way we don't go west to, or, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to, we're trying to get in, instead of going all the way down to Ellevato. See what I'm saying? And then they have to go north on Ellevato to come, to turn west on Tiny Ridge to get into the neighborhood. That's all I'm asking. And a lot of people agreed, you know, I said I'll stand in for, you know, the area to bring back if I have to get a petition to sign for however many live in the back of, you know, I live in the Symphony Homes. So if we could think about that and hopefully come up with a decision, if we can just get that open right there, so the cars can come in. And sometimes I have to go on the dirt road. There's a dirt road I come in on, and to get back on Rocky Way, Rocky Knoll Way, to come back, instead of going all the way down to Ellevato. So that's all I'm asking, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll come and, who else, who I may talk to to get an answer about? Someone can give me an answer?
Yeah, I'm taking notes. We'll research the matter and follow up directly.
Okay, like I said, I moved here in 99, and however long the homes have been, and they're steady coming in, the homes, they're steady building, and everybody agreed, yeah, I'll sign. So I'm just here to stand on behalf of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, we have your information. Thank you so much. Bob Harriman.
While listening to the item on the seal, or the marking, I understand that's a marketing emblem, but I did, I find it a little difficult to understand the building blocks. I don't think the average person's going to look at that and comprehend that. So I have an idea. We want to do, we want to give our youth something to do, do we not? Okay? Why not have a contest? There's hundreds of artists in the high schools and even the elementary schools. Why don't we add them to this with a $500 prize for the winner? And they can design something for us. At least put it in the rest of the stuff that they're going to show you guys. So if you could think, you know, think about that. I think that would be a good contest. It could be put in the newspaper. We've had contests before for certain things, and they've gone over well. But I think some community input on that, and on top of that, it doesn't cost $5,000. $500. Alrighty?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Those are all the cards that I have. So now we will go on to our reports from city manager.
Thanking Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Veterans Day celebration was mentioned earlier. So just to give you a few stats here, we had 41 runners/walkers. I know Councilmember Negretti ran, so thank you for supporting that event. We had 100 veterans that were honored, and I'd like to thank Sue Jones, who, although there were other staff from Recreation, from Public Works, certainly, that assisted. The meat of the actual event was done essentially entirely with, by her. So I want to thank her for that. It was a great event. Second time that she's done it. She's been here for two years, so. The, this past weekend, Saturday, the 18th, we had a Free Dump Day and Recycling Event. 372 vehicles, approximately 106 tons were brought in, including 84 tons of trash, four tons of mattresses. These filled a semi-truck trailer. Approximately 110 mattress-type units. Six tons of appliances and scrap metal, 12 tons of garden trimmings and brush, one ton of recyclables, whether that's cardboard or plastic. Upcoming events, of course, this Saturday is the Kiwanis Christmas Parade. The city of Victorville gets involved helping shut down the streets and things, but the event itself is actually run by Kiwanis. That's at 10:00 a.m. And then, of course, our tree lighting ceremony starts at 4, goes until 7, and the mayor will light the tree, as always, at dusk. Of course, we will have a musical light show again, musical entertainment, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will be stopping by. There'll be food and gift vendors, hot chocolate and cookies while they last. And then finally, Wednesday, December 6th, Bears is doing their annual bicycle giveaway. It's the 19th anniversary. It'll be at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds. This will be the Bears' largest giveaway ever. 300 bikes will be given away to kids this year. It's 100 more than last year. And the children are selected from elementary schools throughout Victorville. And if you're in a bad mood, come and watch 300 kids get a brand-new bike, who probably would not otherwise get a brand-new bike for Christmas, and you'll have a much better day.
Thank you. Now we move on to discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. One have anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My turn. I would ask that the city council consider putting the master plan of streets for Green Tree Boulevard on the agenda for discussion. We recently were informed that that's a program to be six lanes in the future, according to a master plan of streets. It's physically impossible to have six lanes for that area. It isn't six lanes coming from Apple Valley. We are encouraging traffic to turn south on Hisperia Road for our new interchange and road, and to have a development at that intersection of six lanes that comes up the hill and then goes back to four lanes. Kind of defies logic, but I would like that the city council agree to bring this matter back for council discussion. And that may be the end of it, or there may be direction to amend it, depending upon the discussion. But that's my request, to bring that master plan of street, Green Tree Boulevard, to consider going from six lanes to four lanes, which it currently is in all the developed areas.
Adam, yeah.
I have a question. Wasn't that a closed-session item that we were talking about? I don't know. I may be confusing it.
No, the request is just to put the master plan of streets on the agenda. There's nothing closed about that at all.
Well, because I know we were discussing this in closed session, but if it's not the same thing, I'm just asking. But if it's the same concept, but a different topic, and that's what you're saying, I mean, tell me if that's what you're saying.
It's related to a project we discussed in closed session, which was property acquisition. But this is a totally different item.
It's different.
We have a consensus. Would you want to make that a motion and have a formal motion in a second here?
If you need a formal motion, I saw a move.
Motion by Mayor Protam Cox, seconded by Councilmember Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question before that. Is it discussion only?
Yes, that's my request, to bring it back for discussion.
Okay, I do as well.
Motion carries unanimously.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, so First Assembly of God in Victorville from 10:00 to 2:00 is going to be having a Thanksgiving dinner. Everyone's welcome. You want to volunteer as well. I volunteer every year there.
This is for agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me.
This is for, we're still on agenda items. Do you have any agenda items?
Yes, I actually do. It's main district for golf course to include property owners for discussion.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Main district for golf course to include property owners. EDFs?
Agenda item?
Yeah, this is an agenda item.
To be an agenda item. I'm not sure what's the form of the motion.
Property owners.
Yeah, main districts for golf course to include property owners. It's like a CFD, something where you have property owners paying for the golf course, because I know it's not being funded fully. So if you live in that area, you might want to be paying for that area, rather than have the entire city pay for that, or just let it die as it has been.
That was a motion, correct?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Do we have a second? Motion dies.
Anyone else? Okay, then we move on to our reports from council members. There's a five-minute limit. Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the city manager mentioned, the Veterans Day parade was a fantastic turnout. I'd like to thank city staff, and, you know, we, I think it gets better every year. But the mile run, while it doesn't seem like a lot, was half a mile up 7th Street, which was some fine print. And I only got beat by like 25 kids, and there's, no. I was really excited, the little, the kids that were there, the participation. And I just asked everyone, if you had a good time next year, bring somebody else with you, and let's keep doing this, and I really think we can grow that. But kudos to the city staff. I mean, it takes a lot to, and the public safety folks that were there to support us. It was a tremendous turnout. It was really- It, it was, it was a tremendous turnout. It was really, I really felt really proud of all the folks that were there and I do every year, but it really is getting better. And that's, that's all I have. I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I just would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I believe we will be here, when is her, we do have another meeting in December?
We have two meetings scheduled in December at this point.
We still have. So anyhow, I do wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And yes, I was very glad to see that our veterans' parade and presentation went as well as it did. We've heard nothing but wonderful things, so we will continue to improve it and make it bigger. And we invite everyone to come next year and bring someone else with you. Uh, yes.
My name is Mary Davis and I'm new in the area. And presentation means a lot. And I'm new and I'm sitting out there and I'm getting body gestures from all the way across the room and I don't know what's going on. But I think we need to kind of, because we are public and we speed off of you guys. So it's something going on in the house and I don't know what it is and I should be looking like you guys because on November the sixth, my car, I just moved into the area and our car got broken in two. And we call and we didn't get no one, and so I don't know, what's, what is the respond time when you call the police officer in the area?
I'm pretty sure, well, I'm sorry, I can't answer.
They'll contact, you know, you must fill out a report. They'll contact.
No, when you call on the phone.
Yeah, but we don't, we can't.
No, no, I just asked a question. Do you know?
They can't answer you.
Okay, so my, my point is, is that we didn't get a respond until one-thirty in the morning. So is there something that we, we need to speak to?
I'm sorry, you should have filled out a card. That way we would have information so we could get back to you.
Okay.
If you would like to do that and give it to the clerk. Thank you so much. Gomez, did you have something?
Yes, First Assembly of God, Victorville ten to two is going to be having a Thanksgiving dinner. Quiero decirle Feliz Dia de Gracias. Tengan un, tengo un placer de tener un grupo pequeño aquí. Me da mucho gusto de verlos aquí.
I'm sorry.
Happy Thanksgiving. It's a pleasure to have a handful of supporters here tonight. Thank you for being here. Bear Valley Road is a hideous road to the city of Victorville. A community member told me, so I thought I'd bring that up. She probably was meaning she didn't like what the Bear Valley instances look like, so I said, you know, I would bring it up and see what the response is for that and give her a response back. The second thing is the weekdays meetings are at six PM and residents of Victorville are asking, hey, can we change the times or can we look at something different? I get out of Barstow at six, want to change for half an hour and get here hopefully by seven. I said, well, I could just make that known to the council and see if that would work at any moment's time, so I'm bringing that in my council comments. Hopefully giving back a response to this individual as well that wants, would like to have a time changed. Uh, the third thing is today, in partnership with Catholic charities, I was able to bring it, bring in food assistance and utility assistance to those who were in need. Also, on November eighteenth, I had the privilege to also unite with five different community organizations and bring different resources as well as utility assistance to the seniors in the high desert. So that's something also important to be bringing up. The other thing is, I know Travis isn't here, but I'm going to make it public. If he were to bring in his public comments, I would like to make those a part of today's agenda. And six, Captain Schuler, we had a concerned citizen in Apple Valley and I was wondering if you had any information to this concern? Would you be able to speak on this? If not, maybe before the end of the year? And last, we had someone say, what is the response time? And I would like to see if we can get a response for that before the end of this, this meeting.
We're done? Yeah. Uh, nothing else before the?
You didn't want to respond to that?
Hidden as a germ.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hidden as a germ.